Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you would follow along silently, I will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Bucino?
Here.
Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Trustee Oliver?
Here.
Trustee Smith?
Here.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Here.
Clerk Posey here, and Supervisor Dunn. All members are present.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the agenda items. Ms. Posey, there was one agenda item added, correct?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. The request came from the Human Resources Department to add on as number nine, a request to confirm termination of employee number 2550. That's all I have.
And the request is for, again, please?
The request was for, uh, request to confirm termination of employee 2550.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Anyone else?
Clerk Posey will make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion by Ms. Posey?
Karen Goodhue, support.
Seconded by Ms. Goodhue to approve the agenda as amended. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, uh, Clerk Posey, yes. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Bucino?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. The approval of the bills is next. As usual, there are two bill runs. If you wish an item removed, please indicate so at this time.
Madam Chair, this is Karen Goodhue. I would like check number 106699, vendor number 10281, Treasurer Mansfield, pulled from the list and put on the agenda for discussion.
Anyone else?
Nancy Nevers?
So, the motion by?
Goodhue.
Goodhue. Seconded by?
Nevers.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes. Yes.
Seconded by Trustee Nevers to remove, I didn't get the whole numbers, but the Foley Mansfield invoice. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll on that?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bucino?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Bucino?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Dunn?
No.
Supervisor, I would like to just make a note that Treasurer Goodhue requested that they have be removed and placed on the agenda for discussion. Um, it would have to be placed as number 10 on the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the payment of the rest of the bill run?
Yes, Madam Chair, Nancy Nevers. If there are no issues with any other bills on the two runs, I move that we approve both. Thank you.
Motion by Ms. Nevers?
Support by Goodhue.
Order by Ms. Goodhue to authorize payment of the remaining bills. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes. Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Bucino?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. Thank you. Now, we have the approval of the previous minutes, those seen from May 13th. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes?
Karen Goodhue, making a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes from May 13th, 2020.
Motion by Ms. Posey?
Support by Goodhue.
Seconded by Ms. Goodhue to approve minutes from May 13th, 2020. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes. Clerk Posey, yes. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Bucino?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. Thank you. That's motion, Karen. The consent agenda items are routine matters that come before the board. If you want to discuss an item on the consent, please do so at this time. Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent? Charlie Oliver? There has a motion by Mr. Oliver. Seconded by? Please get in by yourself. Seconded by Mr. Bucino to approve the consent agenda. Ms. Posey, would you call the?
Yes. Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Bucino?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue, yes. Clerk Posey?
Yes.
Yes. And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. Thank you. Now, we've come to the public comments portion. Um, please raise your hand, and you will be called on, and please remember there is a three-minute time limit.
All right, we have Lori Scherich. Go ahead.
There we go. My apologies.
No audible?
Yes. Great, thank you. My name is Lori Scherich, and I'm one of the candidates for the Board of Trustees coming up in the August primary, and thank you for the opportunity. My question is, the agenda item that was spoken about on the last meeting, and that will come up again this meeting, is regarding the, my concern about the role of supervision regarding the HR and legal ownership from Mr. Assorti. After hearing last week's meeting, concerned by Supervisor Dunn regarding concerns for her person, as his supervisor, with these particular concerns and things that are going on, how is that supervisory relationship being conducted and held over the next four to five months as we go through the election time period? It appears to be dysfunctional. I don't think that it's going to be running accurately, and so I want to understand how is the board addressing that in turn of making sure that there's adequate supervisory leadership from the supervisor or the board to that particular employee during this period of time? Thank you for your consideration.
Uh, I don't see, here we go. Charles missing. Go ahead.
Uh, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Uh, I'm Charles T. Missing, 16884 Kenneth. Um, we're all, we're all aware that, uh, our good friend Anthony Morocco was indicted today on extortion charges. The one, the one comment in the one, in the one story really, really kind of stuck out. It was a quote from a, a special agent in charge of the investigation. What he said was, "Public corruption is the FBI's number-one investigative priority because a lack of faith in elected government undermines our institutions." I want to actually segue that into the fact that, uh, we, uh, we still haven't appointed a board for, uh, our ethics ordinance. And that actually goes all the way back to December 14th, 2019, when the ethics ordinance was finalized. It is now the end of May, and we have yet to appoint a board. In light of the contingent corruption at the, at the county level, and our well-documented history of unethical and illegal activities, at the township level, it is way past time to make an ethics board a reality. I hope that everyone on this township board will agree to start the process of creating an ethics board as soon as possible. I, I mean, it's the end of May, and this has been going on for, you know, since December, almost six months. So hopefully, we, we can have that established, and if anything else, you know, just having an ethics board would make someone think twice about even possibly doing anything unethical or untoward or whatever. Uh, that being said, uh, you guys have a good evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, next we have Tom Sople. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Tom Sople, and my address is on file with the Clerk's office. Um, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Um, I wanted to follow up regarding my FOIA appeal from last meeting's agenda. There was apparently a double standard that was implemented last meeting. Although it's not a legal requirement to allow residents, when they're appealing certain things, to give them time to speak, um, this is the past practice of this board for the last several years I've been watching, um, these meetings and attending these meetings. And you'll often hear our clerk reference the word "past practice" when she is ensuring that the board is following proper protocol at the Board of Trustees meeting. You hear that phrase utilized all the time, "past practice." And so it's the past practice of the board to have residents speaking at these meetings during their appeal, and at a, at a, at a quite recent meeting, one of the clerk's quote, uh, close friends had a FOIA appeal, and not only was her close friend given time to speak at that appeal, she was able to have, uh, an attorney also represent her on that FOIA appeal. So apparently, um, in Mrs. Dunn and Clerk's Posey's meetings here, when it's convenient, past practice is the protocol that's followed, and when it's not convenient, or when it is convenient in the converse situation, well, that's just the old way of doing things, and we're not doing it, doing it anymore, when, when it's in their favor. So I wanted to point out this double standard to the Board of Trustees, um, because that's not what the past practice has been for the board in terms of how they deal with residents, and I feel that I was treated differently. So, um, based on the past couple outside selections for legal counsel, outside legal counsel, I feel very confident in how this is going to end up when I file in McComb Township Circuit Court, and the residents deserve transparency in, in terms of the documentation that you shared with the insurance carrier. So I will be following up on that, and I wanted to thank the ladies and gentlemen of the board this evening. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Kathy Western. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, thank you very much. Um, this is Kathy Western, a McComb Township resident, um, and I also have some comments about transparency. Transparency is a buzzword that gets thrown around a lot when people want to make a point, um, but few people really look at what it means in operation. In particular, trustee Tim Bucino apprised himself on his transparency, and he's also very interested in having citizens engaged. He has heard, heard them many times in the past. Thanks engaged citizens for speaking at meetings, for being involved and participating in the township government. Yes, he also frequently says, in the spirit of transparency, that people should be upfront and open. Um, now, as I have discussed in the past with Tim Bucino, the federal courts long ago made a ruling that an elected official may not block a constituent from their social media pages. And in the spirit of transparency and citizen engagement, I find it odd that trustee Bucino has blocked me and others from commenting on his Facebook page, and has totally blocked me from being able to read his Facebook posts about subjects concerning McComb Township. For example, I was informed that he posted after the last meeting a copy of a statement that he had made, but he only did it on Facebook. He has me and others blocked from his Facebook account. He has me blocked from commenting on his township Facebook page, so I am not able to be heard. My voice is not heard by him, and I'm not able to be the engaged citizen that he claims to value. Uh, I would also say, in the spirit of transparency, there are many residents who would be interested in hearing from Mr. Bucino how it was last campaign cycle that he received $10,000 in donations, all in $1,000 increments, but they all trace back to the same source, a contractor from a neighboring community. So I'd like to suggest in closing that if you're going to throw around words like transparency, that you not only talk the talk, but walk the walk. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
Is there anybody else that would wish to speak? I'm not seeing anybody's in it.
Supervisor Dunn, you'll need to propose public comments.
Very well. We will move on to, um, the public hearing. This is a public hearing for the 2021 fiscal year budget. It is 7:19, and I will open this public hearing up for comments. First, from board members, anyone have any comments or questions?
Madam Chair, I would just like to say thank you to Stacy Smith. Um, she's had to prepare this budget in a difficult time trying to interact with all our department heads and meet with them individually during the pandemic and the closing of the building, so I just want to thank her for all her hard work and efforts doing it in such an odd atmosphere.
Thank you.
Um, Madam Chair, this is Stacy Smith. I just, I had a couple things to say on the budget, I think, before, um, okay, thank you. Um, hopefully, in front of you tonight, you all have a copy of the 2020-2021 preliminary budget. Um, page I, if you could turn to page I, shows a summary of the 12 funds that are included in the budget. The general fund, the park and rec fund, public improvement fund, municipal roadway fund, and building authority fund, all reflect a shortfall for the year, whereas the fire operating, park and rec revolving, law enforcement, fire improvement, fire pension, retiree healthcare, and water and sewer fund each exhibit a surplus. The detailed line items to support these figures are located on pages 1 through 39, and the 2020 anticipated millage rates, along with their projected revenues, of each using the taxable values from March of 2020, are displayed on page II. I do have one requested change to make at this time. The planning director and the township supervisor requested to increase one line item on page seven under the planning and zoning department. General ledger number 101-723-817.000, consulting and contracting services, from 125,000 to 200,000. This request is to have the public, I'm sorry, the planning consultants help with completing of our township master plan, and you will see that change included in the next preliminary budget, um, that will be distributed at the next public hearing on June 10th. So at this time, I invite any comments, questions, suggested changes from, um, anyone that may have them. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Any questions for Ms. Smith? I hear none. Uh, this is to be adopted at the next board meeting, which is June the 10th. There is no action to be taken tonight, so I will close the public hearing. It is 7:22. And now we will move on to unfinished business, and this is discussing or action to have outside counsel for employee matters, including but not limited to the whistleblower lawsuit. Ms. Smith, I believe you requested this. Can you help us through this, please?
Sure, Madam Chair. Um, at last meeting, um, hearing comments, there were a couple issues that were brought up, and the main issue is just no longer having Mr. Neen. We do have issues that we still need to deal with, with the township. Um, Mrs. Dunn, you brought up a couple different issues regarding yourself, and other information that you recently, um, came across, um, and the whistleblower lawsuit. I think at this point, um, I know Mr. Assorti is back, but I don't think he can walk us through this, and that's why I'm asking for, um, outside legal counsel.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Smith?
This is including, this is for the whistleblower lawsuit? Don't we have the attorneys from the, uh, insurance company handling this? There's two different attorneys that we have handling the, this for us already.
Okay, well, as far as the whistleblower lawsuit, if we have the two, we have the name of the attorney that's handling the whistleblower lawsuit, um, that's fine. I didn't know we had one until last meeting. Um, but we still have other issues that Mrs. Dunn brought up that need to be looked into. I, after the last meeting and the meeting before that, I called NTA with some questions that I had, and, um, unfortunately, they're not able to walk me through anything because they can't give me legal advice, but they did, did give me a name, um, of Foster Swift that I called and I contacted. Um, I still think that we have issues that have to be addressed that Mrs. Dunn brought up.
What issues are those?
Um, let me go back to my notes from... Um, Mrs. Dunn questioned why she wasn't able to vote at the water mill, and she protested that decision. Um, it said that she had information that Mr. Assorti, um, had been advising the other, uh, other board members what to say or do, and not informing others that she knew or understood, and bear with me, I'm reading my notes. Um, she understood or knew because the same was happening with her, that he did not follow the chain of command, um, requesting the IT manager regarding security videos of the ballot box to see who was filling out evaluations. They said employees and department heads are in fear of retaliation, that she's in fear, and that she states that there's a hostile work environment. So I would think that that has to be investigated.
How many attorneys are we going to hire? This is not...
Okay, well, then, Karen, explain, I mean, I...
A lot of this is hearsay, in my mind, okay? I can't, I can't, I have to see the facts first, because these things are happening.
Well, I, I agree with you 100%. Um, normally, if we have an issue that would be concerns over, um, that employee has with an HR director, or, um, has issues with anything regarding the township, they would go to the HR director, or maybe even contact our legal department, but we're not able to do this because our HR is illegal, and this, and this person is suing the township and board members. Well, who else would look into these matters? If it is hearsay, it's hearsay. Investigation's done, and it, it's right or wrong.
Madam Chair, this is trustee Bucino. Um, Kathy, um, as far as the hearsay stuff, it's hard to talk to, but as far as why Janet recused herself from the water mill hearings, I mean, I think there was a lot of legal opinion on why we did that. I think we discussed that in closed session a little bit. I think we knew who it was brought to. Um, I think an original attorney had recommended it, and then Mr. Neen brought it to our insurance company. I think we got correspondence to, to, yes, the second time she needed to recuse herself. I think there were a lot of legal minds on why she had to recuse herself both times. I'm not going to talk to the hearsay, but we definitely received a lot of information on why Mrs. Dunn had to recuse herself.
And Madam Chair, if I may, Nancy Nevers? Tim, are you finished? I'm sorry.
Yes, I am. Thanks.
Okay. Um, well, um, it seems to me that, uh, most of these questions were addressed in the water mill hearing, and to me, that ship has pretty much sailed. However, uh, I find, I find it confusing and concerning that if you were to add up all of the lawyers who have been brought in on issues regarding, um, Mr. Assorti, uh, there are seven, and, uh, I'm sure none of them are working pro bono, so my concern is who is paying for these lawyers and who will pay for the lawyers. Uh, I'm still not convinced that our insurance company, uh, will in fact cover these costs. Um, they have a reservation of rights if they decide that this was spurious or in some way, um, they don't, they're, I'm sure insurance companies look often for ways to get out of covering things, and to me, there seems to be an awful lot there, uh, that they feel they could walk away from this. I don't know. But, uh, also, with the addition of so many lawyers, you might ask if, uh, defendants, uh, in this case, the township, has such a weak case that they continue to need to go to different lawyers for different advice, more advice? I don't know. It's just concerning to me. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Ms. Nevers, I'm not, um, I'm not debating you on the issue. I'm not. Um, I, I don't know where seven attorneys are coming from. I don't know if you had a chance to talk to the insurance company that's handling the whistleblower lawsuit. I have not. I don't... I don't know if I have to, um, put that on the agenda, that we have a closed session to discuss that? Because I haven't talked to anyone regarding the whistleblower. I don't know if anyone else at the board has. I have not. I have not talked to the insurance company. Um, I don't know...
Okay, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. When you're finished, I'll respond.
No, no, I, I, that's what I'm saying. I...
Okay.
I'm not aware of seven attorneys. If we have the insurance company that's handling the whistleblower, that's one attorney. We had Mr. Mian, if that's who you're talking about, um, I, I guess maybe if you can walk me through who the seven were.
I shall.
Thank you.
Yes, I shall. Uh, Mr. Yodas, Dean Yodas, was, uh, brought in, I don't know if it was advisory, but his name. We did meet with him in closed session, Mr. Mian. Um, Howard Wallach, uh, Jim Tan, Lori Stewart, Audrey Torquay.
Okay, I, I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
And when I say, when I say there are seven lawyers, I, I don't mean maybe that they're all working right now. But if they have worked for the township, they need to be paid. I have not spoken with, uh, insurance, with our insurance company. But it just seems to me that, uh, when it comes to insurance people, they try to get out of pay if they can. I'm not saying they will. I'm saying they may. And it is just a concern for me.
Trustee Smith and Trustee Nevers, um, it's, when we talk about hearsay, the hearsay is that of the insurance company possibly not following through is incorrect. I'm one of the people that are named in the lawsuit. I'm currently working with the insurance, uh, carrier and attorney from MML, who's representing me. And I believe as of today, has filed her appearance for me. So this, this, uh, sense of, sense, the sensational, uh, effort to say that the insurance is not going to cover us is incorrect. I mean, I, I'm working with the attorney currently. Um...
Okay, but I don't...
I'm not done yet. I need to go ahead now.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Pardon me.
Thank you. The, there's, there's so much concern about how many attorneys are looking into 20-some employees' comments, residents' comments, board members' comments with regards to, uh, an, a, uh, a person that's working here's, uh, behavior or approach. Whether you believe it's hearsay or not, it's been brought to our attention. Mr. Yodas was brought in to do an investigation just like we would on any other employee that we got that type of information for. However, we couldn't use HR because our HR and our attorney are the same and it's who the complaint was about. That's why we had to hire Mr. Yodas. No different than when Mr. Assorty brought in Kathleen Gotti, whom he handpicked with no board approval or say to investigate my employee, which none of you had a problem with. And you never had any issues with any of the legal bills of the contracted attorneys that we've had to date, handpicked, not board approved by Mr. Assorty. So I find it confusing and concerning that you're so concerned about this one when you've never said a word about it for four years.
Uh, may I respond?
Sure.
I don't want to interrupt. Okay, perfect. Well, I never, uh, indicated that the insurance company would not pay. I am saying they may not pay. And the fact that they're working with you, um, it, it just seems like there are a ton of lawyers involved and, uh, none of it has been, uh, brought to the board, uh, for, uh, approval except for this tonight. This is the first time. And, uh, it's just, it's just something that I feel, um, I need to share my thoughts on. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I just, am I confused, um, that selecting attorneys for investigation, for lawsuits, for prosecution in the township? So selecting those, have those ever gone to the board before? Have I missed something? You keep saying that, but we've never, it's never happened.
Well, this is, obviously, this is a, um, uh, an unusual situation, uh, with, uh, um, this particular issue. Uh, Mr. Yodas and Mr. Mian were brought in, um, initially and gave us their opinion. And then the water mill hearings happened. And I thought that was state data complete. And, uh, it, it seems like that is dead and the water's done over, let's get on. And, uh, I understand there is a lawsuit pending. And for those, those two people, uh, they need, uh, legal representation. And that's a different, that's a different subject. That's a lawsuit, uh, different than, uh, what the township did with Mr. Assorty. But I just felt with water mill and the vote that this was a dead issue. That's all.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Nevers, I, I agree with you as far as you, the water mill hearing was done and it was, it was, um, as you said, a dead issue. But my concern was things were brought up at the last meeting that I think need to be looked into. I don't, I, I'm not trying to dig up what in the past was happened. I had issues with, well, I think we all had issues that were, what were brought up at the last meeting and I think they need to be looked into. I'm not trying to go backwards by any sense.
Okay, understood.
Madam Chair, this is Trustee Bussino, but, you know, it, I, one of the things that I was actually going to talk about in my comments was the supervisor accountability. Again, we can't talk everything, but if we're going to talk about things that were brought up, I, for, for years, for years, Mrs. Dunn was the biggest supporter of that employee. And when things were brought up about him, she was the biggest roadblock to have things investigated. And all of a sudden, she's afraid of him. I, I found that to be a little shocking. Um, maybe she doesn't want him there. That's a lot different than being afraid of them. Also, in fairness, this whole board got in writing, in an email, a reason from an attorney why, a reason, and I'm not going to share that reason, of why we might not lock that employee back in the building. And it had nothing to do with fear or safety of anybody.
Uh, Trustee Oliver here. Yeah, Trustee Oliver. Kathy, I got a comment to you. So this, this attorney would, uh, look into the, to the matter of, of an HR slash attorney all at once? Would he be looking into separation of the two duties? What do you think, what's your idea on that?
Uh, Mr. Oliver, I don't have an, I, I don't have a...
Right, but that's, is, is that, that's something that would go along with this? Because that, that's been a big conflict here. Uh, the attorney being the HR, very big conflicts.
Well, I mean, as I brought up right now, it's an issue regarding, because normally, we could talk to legal, but we can't. And that's why I just wanted to make sure that we were able to talk to outside counsel regarding the new issues that were brought up. That's, that's, as far as HR and legal, um, the combined position, if that's what you're talking about, that's what's the issue that we have here, that we don't have legal that we can talk with. So we need outside coun, when we don't have legal that we can talk to, we have to request outside counsel. Am I wrong?
That's why I'm looking at it.
Not, it, it, just to sort of, not to mention that there needs to be some type, there's, there's been the issue of fear in the workplace, whether it happened yesterday or before. And we can't go to HR on guidance how to match the two, to move us forward, to, uh, answer the resident's question that, that how is the supervisory role going to go? We can't, the problem is, we can't ask HR and we can't ask legal because both of those are the same person. And because in the best interest, they have somebody retained so that if board members or employees at this point have questions or concerns or something with regards to this moving forward, they should have someone that they should be able to go to. Not to mention, if we all recall, the last meeting was a disaster and we couldn't get comments, parliamentary procedure guidance, or anything from council because it was with regards to council who's suing the township. So what happens when we're at these meetings and these issues get brought up? We can't ask council for guidance, clarification, opinions because he's in fact the plaintiff on the case. So I, I think it's in our best interest to have somebody available to everybody when we're in these situations. I know I don't want to sit through another meeting like that.
That was my, that was my concern.
What is your concern? Well, uh, don't we, don't we have a...
Wouldn't we be able to go to the MML attorneys and ask them?
Yes.
Are they representing you?
No, they're specifically, the MML attorney assigned to me is specifically representing me, not the township. Janet's not...
Right, yours, but then there's another one that represents the township and Mrs. Dunn.
They, they're not going to sit in on our meeting, Karen. And they're not, they can't, they're not here, they're not here to, to give support to our employees that have concerns or to give us a process on how to, uh, merge the, this new, this, this situation. That's not what they're hired for. That's, they're just defending the case. It's, it's different. They're defending a lawsuit, they're not here to give the township guidance and advice and opinion. Ms. Goodhill, I did, like I said, I did call, um, MTA twice, after two different board meetings the following day. And...
Not MPA, MML.
Both.
The attorney of MML. Okay.
Yeah, but from my understanding, MML, MML. Okay, go ahead.
The last meeting, if I remember right, the only comment that was made during the supervisors was that she was in fear and she wanted, uh, something done. The only one I see that's being retaliated right now against is Mr. Assorty. I'm sorry. He has not been in the office. When he is in the office, he's in a suite with a lot of people. If he was going to retaliate against anybody, I think there'd be a lot of witnesses. And that would be very dumb on his part if he did do something at this time. I think he's been acting very professional in this case. And, um, I just think it is a total waste of taxpayers' money because of, uh, employees' so-called fear.
Okay. Do you realize how awful that sounds, that you said there's so-called fear? It's terrible. Absolutely terrible.
Oh, that's my feelings. I'm sorry.
Well, I don't, I, if someone, if you're upset or sad or in fear of something, would you want someone to quote it as so-called that it doesn't exist? I guess, that's, that's just terrible. But that's, that's your, that's your opinion, not mine.
Madam Chair...
This is...
Yes.
This is Janet Dunn.
Yes.
I never said that I was afraid of Mr. Assorty physically. I said, and I'm quoting this from what I said last meeting, quote, "The employees are afraid of retaliation. The department heads are afraid of retaliation." I am afraid of retaliation. This is a hostile work environment, unquote. I hope that clears up some of the confusion. I am not, I am speaking. I am not afraid of Mr. Assorty whatsoever. I spoke with him yesterday. It was very cordial. We didn't have any problems communicating. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I never said you were afraid of physical harm. I simply was upset.
Mr., this, this Bussino indicated that I was physically afraid of him. That is not true. Not at all.
Madam Supervisor, this is Trustee Bussino. I'm glad you cleared that up. But I also remember you made a statement that the reason that an attorney from Foley Mansfield had to meet with you at the door is because you were afraid. I'm sorry if I misinterpreted that. I'm not sure how Tom Assorty could have retaliated against you then and why you need an attorney when he came back to work. That's the quote I'm going off of.
And, and if I may, Madam Chair, uh, that it might have just, it was a confusing end of our meeting at the last board meeting. But I was absolutely under the impression that, uh, when Ms. Smith, uh, recapped everything that you said, that she made it sound like you were in fear physically. So I would stand corrected on that, if that's the case. But that was the impression I went away with after the last meeting. So I'm glad that you corrected that. Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, I'm asking the board. So does the board think, after what we heard at last meeting, we don't need outside counsel to investigate any of these issues that were brought up?
I do not. I think it's a waste of taxpayer money at this time.
Well, if I may respond also, I think Mr. Assorty, uh, has acted in a very gentlemanly manner. I don't think yet he's gearing up for any fight. I think he wants to, um, get on with his job. I think he wants to be helpful. In fact, I, uh, am in possession of a, of a document that, uh, Miss, or Mrs. Solomon, uh, sent earlier today regarding the Waze Halling contract. And Mr. Assorty asked if it could be put in Word document format. And she graciously got on that immediately, sent it back, and he sent her a thank you. I think he wants to put this behind him. Thank you.
Oh, Ms., Ms. Nevers, I'm not trying to go backwards. I'm trying to go forward what was addressed. We have, my opinion, and I'm still going to make the motion, that I still think that we need outside counsel for employee matters. And I don't know if it's for the whistleblower lawsuit or not. Maybe I'll put that aside until I'm able to talk to the attorney from MML, which I haven't talked to, and I don't know if any other board members had to talk to them yet or be wanting to talk to them. But how do we not have outside counsel in case we have a meeting like we did last meeting, where we had no legal counsel to turn to? So, Madam Chair, I still make the motion to hire outside counsel.
Motion by...
This, this Charlie Oliver. Kathy, are you making a motion right now to retain outside counsel?
Yes, I am. I'm making a motion to hire outside counsel for employee matters and in, but limited to not, uh, I don't know as far as the whistleblower. I don't know if we need that or not. But I guess I'll add that in there. For employees' matters, included but not limited to the whistleblower lawsuit. Uh, I'll go forward.
Okay, motion by Ms... Second is by Mr. Oliver. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
I have a question, please.
Go ahead.
Is this going to be put out for bid or is this going to be handpicked as well?
Ms. Posey, would you like...
I've never handpicked anyone. I've always given three names of attorneys. I talked to Mr. Palmer.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying you, Ms. Smith, I'm not saying you. I'm saying as a whole.
There were three in the packet. Does anybody have a recommendation? Ms. Smith, why don't you make a recommendation since you're making the motion as to who it is you would suggest that we use? We had all the information in the packet. That's what I would suggest you do.
Did this go out for bid?
Professional services, Karen, if you read the purchasing policy, does not have to go out for bid. Mr. Assorty's never put it out for bid. You're killing me on how you are...
You are correct. You are correct. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Stand corrected.
Go ahead, Ms. Smith. Um, okay, um, I will make a motion.
There is a motion on the floor. There is a motion on the floor. I've asked Ms. Posey to call the roll.
Madam Supervisor, Ms. Smith, for the space of it not appearing to be handpicked, there were three law firms included in the packet. I would suggest at this time, since Ms. Smith is making the motion that she may suggest, and we can agree or disagree, whether or not that we pick one of the three that are in the packet. Or if the board is okay with her picking one of the three, I'm sorry, if you select one of the three... you select one of the three. It just has to be clear in the motion, that's all I, that's all I'm trying to clear up.
There is a motion by Ms. Smith, seconded by Mr. Oliver to hire outside counsel for legal issues. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Bosno?
No.
Trustee Nevers?
No.
Treasurer Goodhue?
No.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. That motion carries. Thank you.
Ms. Dunn.
Next from the supervisor's office is a request to extend the state of emergency until June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty. Chief Phillips, are you there?
Yes.
Thank you. Would you go through this thing?
I'm just recommending that the board consider extending the current state of emergency that will expire tomorrow on May twenty-eighth through June twenty-fifth. This matches the exact same thing that the county commissioners have approved. I spoke this afternoon with the county emergency management. He said that he would recommend that we continue to stay under the state of emergency along with the recommendation from the county executive's office last week. The county executive did announce that of the hundred and fifty-five million dollars from the CARES Act that the county is receiving, ten million of it will come to local municipalities. We're supposed to be provided sometime this first week of June with the formula that will be used on how that money will be divided up between the municipalities, that the emergency manager recommended. The main reason to stay under the state of emergency would be any additional FEMA reimbursement funds that become available as we go through this process.
Thank you. Any questions about the, um, extension?
Chief, uh, Chief Phil, Charlie Oliver, is there going to be, uh, do you see a chance of any FEMA money coming?
Uh, well, uh, the finance director and myself, we have, um, been given track of FEMA opportunities that are there. Ms. Smith has filed all of the required paperwork and the forms. There is a reimbursement match, we're waiting on what is reimbursable. However, the CARES Act funding would provide a hundred percent reimbursement, so, uh, we probably, we won't know exactly what we can apply for funding through the CARES Act fund or whether it's through the FEMA reimbursement until both of those rules come out, as I said, which we can't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any motions?
Ms. Dunn, Janet Dunn, Charlie Oliver, I would, I would make a motion that we extend the state of emergency until June twenty-five, twenty-twenty.
Motion by Mr. Oliver.
Clerk Posey to court.
Seconded by Ms. Posey to extend the state of emergency until June twenty-five, twenty-twenty. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Bosno?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. Thank you. That motion carries. Next, we have a request to confirm employee number two-five-five-two status of employment with McComb Township. Mr. Assorti, are you there?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Madam, uh, Mr. Assorti, may I?
This matter involves a.
Mr. Assorti. Madam Chair, I just want to know, she read the, she read the wrong employee number. Uh, she read two-five-five-two, it should be two-five-five-zero.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay, just, just for the record, go ahead, Mr. Assorti.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. The, um, this is regarding an employee in the water and sewer department. On May fifth, um, Mr. Wanglin's department contacted this employee, requiring him to return to work on May eleventh. May eleventh came and he did not report. Uh, the, the department made multiple attempts to contact him, including visiting his home, uh, without a response. They contacted him on a daily basis and, um, filled out a report and submitted it to the HR department every day of their attempts to, to have it done. On May sixteenth, that employee signed for a certified letter and that confirmed that he was to return to work, and we continued to, uh, contact his home on a daily basis. Uh, in addition to that, on May twenty-first, that employee signed a certified letter from the township dated May nineteenth, which was a laudermill letter, um, that Mr. Wanglin and I put together. Uh, it informed the poss, that employee the possibility of discipline based on its violation of the township's attendance policy and failure to report to work. He was provided an opportunity to respond and, um, given a hearing date of Tuesday, May twenty-sixth at ten. Uh, that time came and went as well, but there was no appearance. In addition to that, under the collective bargaining agreement, um, with, uh, mate, um, after five days after he received a certified letter of being notified that he was returned to work, he did not, and under the terms of the contract, uh, the township did, on the next business day, send him notification of his loss of seniority and forfeiture of employment, um, and that is his term, his, um, employment would be terminated with the township. So with that, uh, we're requesting a motion to confirm the termination of employee two-five-five-zero, both on basis of the laudermill information and other terms of the collective bargaining agreement. And I can, I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone has. May I also add that, uh, there's been constant communication with his union representative about what's been going on.
Any questions from anyone about the termination?
Uh, yeah, Trustee Oliver, has the employee indicated any reason why you don't want to come back to work?
Uh, Trustee Oliver, no, that's why we gave, we gave him a laudermill letter and explained to him all the times that we've had, uh, that, uh, Mr. Wanglin's department attempted to contact him with no response, including sending somebody his home to check on him. Um, we gave him all kinds of time, the union had not heard from him, um, we had not heard from him, uh, we gave him that opportunity as required by law, and he chose not to attend.
Okay. How many years of service has this employee given us?
Uh, not much, he's the lowest end on the seniority list.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve the termination of employee two-five-five-zero.
Is this Ms. Nevers?
Karen. Treasurer Goodhue.
Motion by Ms. Nevers?
No, no. No, no.
And I, and Nevers will support.
Who, who made the motion? I brought it with Ms. Nevers. If you can say.
No. Goodhue.
Treasurer Goodhue made the motion and, uh, Trustee Nevers supported it, Supervisor.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Goodhue, seconded by Ms. Nevers to approve the termination of employee number two-five-five-zero. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bosno?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. That motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on now to board comments, and we will start.
I got, I got it.
Number ten.
Supervisor. Madam Supervisor, um, there was the add-on to discuss the Foley Mansfield bill as number ten, because it was removed from the bill on per discussion.
Very well. I believe, um, Ms. Goodhue, you asked to take it off?
Yes, please. Um, I realize that we, um, hired this attorney, uh, as an emergency, but I feel that there was plenty of time to come to the board afterwards to ask for the board's approval, and that was never done. Um, the supervisor's spending limit is five thousand. With this bill, it is almost three times that much. Um, when we can't keep, uh, bending policies, this is a policy set in place, so therefore I do not want to pay this bill, so I make a motion that we do not pay this bill.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Supported by Nevers.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to deny the payment of the Foley Mansfield invoice.
I, I have, Trustee Oliver, Trustee Oliver's got a question. Uh, have you, have we, uh, discussed it with, uh, Mansfield on why it was so much? Was, was dollars billed properly? Did we make sure everything was done right on that end?
Trustee Oliver, that detailed billing, um, indicates what the, all the hourly charges were.
Okay, and it, and the math all comes out?
It would appear so, yes.
Okay. All righty. Thank you.
The, the point is that the limit of the supervisor is five thousand dollars, and this is almost, this is between thirteen and fourteen altogether, and it was never approved by the board.
Madam Chair, I'd like to ask a question. Go ahead, are you, are you finished?
Go ahead.
Then I'd like to ask a question. So, we approve for American justice every single month, seven thousand nine hundred and some dollars for prosecution, which has never gone to the board, never gone out for RSP to know if that's a fair price, yet you have no problem approving that every single time, which increased to almost ninety thousand dollars a year, but you're concerned about the attorney that came in while we lost both our HR director and our attorney during a pandemic to assist the township in guidance? Am I, am I understanding that correctly?
You are, but the thing of it is, in Mr. Assorti's contract, he has the ability to hire whom he feels will do the best for the township. That is his expertise. In the policy, purchasing policy, it is a policy that the supervisor has a five thousand dollar limit without board approval. That is the point. It never came to the board to ask for approval to hire this person. We don't know where he's, how we received him. I could have picked a person, would you have agreed with the person I picked? It was never put to the board's approval to hire that attorney, and there was plenty of time to do it.
So, Madam Chair, if I may, maybe you could understand now why it was so important when we were trying to get the purchasing policy to be consistent throughout everybody on the board so there's no gray areas, it would have been better to have everybody held to the same standard. I'm all set, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, there is a motion on the floor. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Treasurer Goodhue?
I'm making the motion to not pay the bill, yes.
Trustee Nevers?
No, I won't, I don't want the bill paid.
So your answer would be yes, then?
Uh, if you do, I want to clarify, that's why I clarified it. If you do not want it paid, you vote yes.
Okay, I vote yes.
Trustee Bosno?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
No.
Trustee Oliver?
No.
Clerk Posey, no. Supervisor Dunn?
No. That motion carries. Thank you. Now we will move on to board comments, and we'll start with the trustees, Mr. Bosno.
Yes, thanks, Madam Chair. Um, first of all, I do want to continue to thank the residents who engaged you, and I do, I would love to answer the question that, uh, Ms. Western brought to me about transparency and about campaign donations, and I think it's going to be very healthy if all of us start explaining our campaign donations. First of all, when it comes to campaign donations, I do like to, I wish to thank Ms. Western for her donation to my campaign in twenty sixteen, so thank you for that, Ms. Western, but I want to explain the donation she's talking about. Um, after the primary in two thousand sixteen, I had a group of residents, county residents, countywide, who came to me and said, "Mr. Bosno, we have no idea how you knocked off somebody on a slate that was well-funded the way they were, the, you, the powerful people that are behind them, the consultants they have at their fingertips, the monster signs that were on every corner. We don't know how you did it with nine hundred dollars, but you, just like you got the board's attention, you got other people's attention. We don't know how you actually won a seat on that board when you stood in front of that board and called out the corruption." They said, "But..." It's going to be a little bit different in the primary because you are going to need some support now. The organization was called Citizens for Honest Government. They came to me and said, "Listen, we want to help you. We think you're going to need to do a little bit more than you did in the primary for the reasons I just stated." So they wrote me a check, or made a commitment to me, "So we're going to give you this amount." They found out that as a pack, they weren't around long enough to give me the amount that they wanted to. So they came back and said, "Listen, we can't write it all from the pack, so we'll give you a thousand dollars." So I'll correct one thing on Ms. Western's, um, statement. It was nine thousand dollars from residents, it was a thousand dollars from the pack of Citizens for Honest Government. And they came back and said, "Listen, we, we know you made some plans, these people are going to come after you, okay? Um, as you probably already know, your son's going to be taken down from Corners." I goes, "Yes, they have." And they said, "You're fighting Vino Bucci, you're fighting the forces of Anthony Morocco. You better get ready for this fight." So when they couldn't give me the full amount, they followed campaign standards, they followed the law, and were very, very aware of what they needed to do, so they came back and those people that were part of this pact, Citizens for Honest Government, honored that commitment to me to make sure I could follow through with campaign plans. One of the things you might want to do too, just suggesting this, is do a little bit more research on where some of those names are coming from and where those connections really could be to me. But I tell you what, if we want to start discussing campaign contributions at the board, I will proudly, proudly stand behind those people who wrote me those checks from Citizens for Honest Government. But again, um, I guess if we're going to take that path, we can take that path. Um, yeah, listen, um, I had some comments prepared. Tomorrow, it appears that the long-awaited plea hearing of Vino Bucci is going to become reality. It is reported that he's going to make a verbal account of the crimes that are included in his indictment. Shamefully, McComb Township's present dots the twenty-seven-page indictment. I cannot guess what will be revealed, but I'm sure some questions are going to be answered, and our new questions are going to arise about corruption in town hall. I'm going to revert to say more until we learn what is communicated by the Bucci defense team tomorrow. I do feel, however, that we need to be prepared to have a plan. to have a plan as a board how to address what is revealed in the most public way. One suggestion I have, if Mr. Bucci does plead guilty, I'd recommend that this board start to identify where Mr. Bucci's name may be on plaques around the township and think of ways how to remove the presence of his name from future generations of residents in our township. The only thing I wanted to talk about tonight is I wanted to address you, Madam Supervisor, about accountability. During your tenure as supervisor, you time and time again have been able to dance around, taking accountability for your actions, many of them found to be criminal. It's been well documented at meetings, in the media, in campaign flyers. You deny. You become defiant. You blame everything on others and you dismiss the accusers. Then ultimately, you are found to be a falter. Nowhere was this behavior on display more than last meeting. I found it shocking of how you, unannounced, put this township in harm's way with your mo- You know, and speaking of that motion, I really thought you were going to remove that tonight, because you removed that motion via email. I think that may have violated Open Meetings Act. But I thought you were going to take that off the table tonight. Anyway, knowing the current legal issues you are facing, I'm going to limit what I'm going to say. I know you've got to be careful how you address these issues at the moment. You may want to look out for yourself, too, with how you respond. I was also shocked at the way that you painted a narrative about an employee that you defended for years. You were his biggest fan. You even admitted last meeting that you listened to everything he said. And I'm paraphrasing, not quoting, in how he directed you. Your behavior makes accusations made in legal claims sound much more credible. At some point, you, Madam Supervisor, need to take accountability of the position you've put this township in its residence room.
Thank you. Ms. Nevers?
Um, I, I'll just stand on the comments that I made earlier. I have no further comments to make. Thank you.
Mr. Oliver?
Nothing at this time.
Ms. Smith?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Treasurer's comments. Ms. Goodhue?
Yes. I had considered, um, asking the board, uh, for permission or approval to send out a letter to residents, um, informing them how to make payments. They're very confused. We're receiving a lot of phone calls and emails about how to make the water payment. And we have people that are being sent to pick up pool permits and things like that. So I had wanted to send out a, uh, an informational letter on payment for the building and water and, and everything that is available. But it did not, uh, come out to be very cost-effective, so I removed that. I do not, uh, uh, want to put that on the agenda tonight. So I do want to remind residents that if you place your payment, no cash, uh, please, but if you place your payments in the night depository, it is, uh, put into a box that comes into our area, and it is locked. We're the only ones that take things out of there, so your payment is safe. You can do online payments. You can, uh, mail. We still get mail twice a week, so they can, we will still get the mail. And please, uh, consider, because we get the mail only twice a week, your payments do take a little bit longer to get posted. Um, so, uh, building also has a lot of their permits online, and you can apply for those online, and that should not hold you up as well. And, um, ta- the tax bills are getting prepared, and we're hoping that we'll be back to normal before those, uh, come out and those payments, uh, have to start. So I just wanted to let residents know that we are taking and getting your bills, and they are being processed, albeit, uh, a little bit longer than usual because we are staging our employees and coming in, so that they are safe. And then, um, I just wanted to make one final comment. When you start not following policies, that is when corruption starts creeping in. Thank you.
Court's comments. Ms. Posey?
Thanks, Madam Supervisor. Um, I'm just going to give up an update to our voters, uh, with regards to the application that they may have received from the Secretary of State this week. The Secretary of State mailed absentee voter applications to all registered voters who are not on our local permanent absentee mail-in voter list. If you are already on our absentee voter list, you will receive your application from the clerk's department next week. But please remember, no matter if you got an application from the Secretary of State or from the McComb Township clerk's office, you must complete the application and sign it and return it to the clerk's depart- department in order to receive your ballot in the mail for the August 4 election. Due to the influx in voters choosing to vote by mail, we now have two postage-free options to return your application and ballot. There's a drive-up drop box in front of Town Hall, and now we've added one to the senior center located off 23 Mile Road on Elma Drive. Both of them are drive-up drop boxes for your convenience. You can always return your application and ballot by mail or at the clerk's office when the buildings are open to the public. We will have a public service announcement explaining the steps to the application to ensure that you complete it correctly, to make sure that you do get your ballot as requested. Once again, we're doing everything we can to make voting as safe and secure and convenient during this time. Please feel free to contact the clerk's office should you have any questions. Um, and, and again, stay hey, stay safe and stay healthy. That's all I have.
Thank you. On the supervisor's comments, uh, earlier today, I've seen the figures for the COVID-19 virus prevention costs occurred so far. From the general fund, we have spent $21,303.94. From the fire operating fund, we have spent $5,833.43. Parks and Recreation has spent $232. Water and Sewer has spent $4,984.94, for a total of $34,901.51. With our estimated population over 87,000, that equals approximately 40 cents per person. Even if we don't get one cent back from the federal government, that $34,000 has been spent wisely. Thank you. That's all that I have for this evening. And that concludes the business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make, Clerk Posey made a motion to adjourn.
Trustee Nevers, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Nevers?
Support, Clerk Posey.
Who, who supported it?
Clerk Posey.
Clerk Posey. Motion by Ms. Nevers, seconded by Ms. Posey to adjourn. Ms. Posey, do you call the roll?
Yes. Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Bustenow?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers? I'm sorry, Trustee Oliver?
Yes, yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. That motion carries, and we are adjourned.